Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Star County Conventionist Court. Judge Veda is not in today, so I'll be presiding. So, welcome, everyone. And it's October the 9th, 2018, and this is a regular Conventionist Court meeting. And I'd like, everyone is welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). (Pledge of Allegiance). (Pledge of Allegiance). (Pledge of Allegiance).
Item number three, approval of minutes. We got a stack here, I don't know if you have that.
(Indistinct conversation).
And the other CDs and the minutes are here. I don't know if you guys have time to...
(Indistinct conversation).
It has been moved by Commissioners Peña, second by Commissioner Oliver. Any discussion? If not, all those who are in favor signify by saying aye. Or to oppose, same sign. Motion carried. We're gonna skip item number four. The auditor's not here at this time. But I'm gonna go around the agenda. We have some presentations at this time, and I'd like to bring them forward in case people who need to leave are welcome to stay to the whole Conventionist Court. But I'm gonna go to item number seven. Presentation by Efraín Carrera, 1966 Farm Workers Movement. Efraín Carrera.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mi nombre es Efraín Carrera, y esto es Daría Redondo Vera. Este, fuimos parte de la huelga en 1966. And what has happened, and the reason we are here is, we want the historical marker changed because none of us are mentioned. The people who were really involved in a huelga were never mentioned. Cesar Chavez had nothing to do with our huelga. Jane Nelson had nothing to do. He was here for a few days. And the lady that you all gave the money to took $5,000 from you, and she spent something like $800 and some dollars. And the...
She had nothing to do with us.
She never consulted or asked anything until we, she uncovered it at the college here. Now, what is wrong with this is, why did she decide to mention Cesar Chavez and the other guy when they had nothing to do with us? We were part of the huelga, yes. And Commissioner Garcia, I think that your family was migrant farm workers too. And I don't know who else, probably Jem and... But we all know what it is to be a farm worker and what we were paid. And I'll give you a brief history of what we were paid as farm workers. Forty cents an hour for picking cantaloupe, and $1.25 for 100 pounds of cotton. That's why, one of the reasons why we went on strike. It was very unjust, very abusive, and hopefully, we get to change the names of who is mentioned in the rock here because... And I have a copy here of who should be mentioned, and I'm hoping that you folks will approve it.
(Indistinct conversation). 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 (Indistinct conversation).
(Indistinct conversation).
(Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation). (Indistinct conversation).
Es una cosa muy, con mucha historia, muy histórico. Ora, las otras personas que queremos ahí, y aquí los tengo y les doy una copia a ustedes, este, los que empezaron la huelga fue Margil Sánchez y Lucio Galvano, con los que empezaron. Ellos fueron los originales, deben de estar ahí en la piedra. Este, el presidente fue Domingo Redondo, hermano de Lali. El vicepresidente Pedro Ríos. El vicepresidente dos, Valdemar Díaz. El secretario fue Rodrigo García, y el tesorero Daría. Este, esos son los nombres que queremos ahí. Ora, otros nombres que les pidemos que nos acepten porque nos ayudaron, eso sí nos ayudaron.
(Indistinct conversation).
Hicieron mucho trabajo, hicieron por la huelga. Gilberto Padilla, y Bill Chandler, y Antonio Orendain. Que se pongan de una manera en la piedra porque es histórico y sí, sí se hizo mucho por esta gente. Este, nos ayudaron bastante, mucho. Y queremos que esta gente se reconozca y que sea en la Mesa Directiva y los otros nombres que le dije.
Y que la mujer haga lo que nosotros le estamos pidiendo porque realmente ella no tuvo nada que ver aquí con nosotros. En esta huelga ella no tuvo nada.
Nada, absolutamente.
Yo lo dije a ella desde que aceptaron ustedes, le dije yo, qué nombres quería que pusieran ahí. La mujer no aceptó, ella puso lo que ella quiso. Le digo, ella no debe de opinar ni hacer la piedra como ella le quiso.
En mi opinión, ella ni sabía de la huelga.
Sí, ella no tuvo nada.
Nunca supo nada, así es que, por qué va, lo que ella diga, no. Se debe poner los nombres de los que de veras tuvieron que ver con esta cosa.
(Indistinct conversation). 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 (Indistinct conversation).
Yo estoy de acuerdo con ustedes, y si alguno sabe de la huelga, soy yo, porque en ese tiempo yo estaba trabajando ahí en la casita farm, yo andaba trabajando en la labor, y me acuerdo perfectamente bien de todo lo que sucedió y todo lo que pasó, porque pues yo estaba, yo estaba ahí.
Sí.
Este, la cosa que uno entiendo, yo, ¿por qué esa señora? Bueno, ¿y ustedes la trajeron, o quién la trajo?
No, no, mire, voy a explicarle. A mí me hablaron por teléfono, un señor, el Lobisco, que sí sabía algo de la huelga, entonces le dije que iba andando en la huelga. Dijo, platiqué muy poquito, entonces ya le platiqué, dijo, ¿le gustaría venir para qué? Dijo, a venir a hablar de la huelga. Él sí me gustaría, pero no tengo gasto, nosotros le damos los gastos. So, y ahí, y había mucha gente, y al final no vino. Ahí les hablé, les di los nombres de los difuntos, de los huelguistas, y luego después pues hablé un poco, me dijo que, pero que hablara algo, y hablé, pero después de lo que pasó en el cuento y todo. Bueno, y ya de ahí me vine, y el jueves día mismo, el domingo, me vine para atrás. Al nunez vino Daría aquí, ya buscar a los huelguistas. Entonces yo fui cuando me he buscado a los huelguistas, pues ya se veía comunicar la mayoría de huelguistas. Y yo anduve con él, todos, porque estuvimos aquí en la miring, yo anduve con él, ¿se acuerda cuando dijimos? Bueno, este, tuvimos uno, o sea, Del City también los comisionados, Del City y todo. Pero digo, ella fuera aquí solo, como dije yo, pues ella no debía derecho de descripción, o sea, me debía preguntar más a mí, porque yo anduve con él, todos los mil. Mira tú eres la mera huelguista aquí, ¿qué vamos a hacer? ¿Qué le vamos a poner a la piedra? No, a mí no me preguntó nada, nada. Ella se fue y hizo la piedra que no ella quiso. Y yo le dije a ella por teléfono, le dije, esa piedra no se va a poner. Mientras no lleve los nombres, ya está, ella la tenemos para abierta.
Este, mire, yo creo que, yo pensaba que iba a estar aquí esta mañana.
No, no quiere venir, no quiere...
Este, pero yo le voy a dirigir al juez que le mande una carta o algo de... Y yo estoy de acuerdo con lo que usted está diciendo, porque yo sé que ustedes son activas en esa huelga y toda esa gente que mencionaron, sé perfectamente que está correcto. Está, lo que está mal hecho, la señora que no ha incluido esos nombres, está mal, este, so, necesitamos, yo puedo darle, hablar con el juez que mande traer, llamar esa señora para acá, que venga a ver, dar una explicación, qué fue lo que pasó y qué es lo que necesitamos que se corregá.
Yo le dije a Lucio la Navidad, porque tuvimos una monta en la casa mía, le dije a Lucio, que le hagan una carta a los comisionados y la firmen el juez, le dije que la manden traerle.
Okay.
Que la manden traer allá para acá, que no quiere venir porque está muy viejita. Digo, no hacía nada, que viene a macanear, y caían, y dice, ¿por qué no se habla? Que para ir a hablar contigo, para, a ver si nos ponemos de acuerdo, a ver si era lo que gustaría. Pero no, no, ya no quieren hablar por teléfono conmigo.
Okay, está bien. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't know, I know we got several presentations. We're gonna limit, it's one that wanna, we'll do a presentation for five minutes. Next, I'd like to bring, item number six, is a presentation by Ruben G. Flores on STC Bachelor Program.
Dr. Flores.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I approach and give you all some flowers that I have from?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Dr. Ruben Flores with South Texas College, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. The reason that I'm here is I wanted to ask you all's permission to see if we could go ahead and talk to your employees about the bachelor's programs that we have available at South Texas College. I know a lot of people don't know that we have bachelor's programs. You're familiar with associates and certificates that we have had historically, but now we have four programs that are four-year degrees. One of them is, the one that I teach is the Bachelor of Applied Science in Organizational Leadership. We have one of Bachelor of Applied Technology in Computer Information Technology. We have a Bachelor of Applied Technology in Technology Management, and a Bachelor's in Applied Technology in Medical and Health Services Management. What we have been doing in Idale County is we've been going to all the county departments and presenting over there. We've been going to the cities and presenting to the employees. We've been going to the school districts and presenting to employees and to the students. And we've been going to private businesses as well and presenting to employees, to healthcare, the healthcare sector and to manufacturing. And we'd like to do the same thing here in Starr County. We want to present to your employees and tell them of the opportunities that we have, because it's the best-kept secret, I think, that we have four-year degrees. And so I would like to ask your permission that we be able to present to your employees about our programs.
Well, I don't have any problem about the rest of the commissioners, but I think it's a good idea to...
Very good idea.
I'm pretty sure, a lot of them are aware, but it would help to make sure that, you know, let them know that there's these things available, and we do appreciate it.
I have an employee participating in this program.
In our program. Yes, we do have a lot of Starr County students. We'd like to be able to get the word out so we can get more. I think that it is a tremendous opportunity. It's only the program in which I teach, $750 a term, flat tuition fee, whether they take one course or three courses, all they pay is $750 that term. It's very affordable. They can either go and attend personally, or they can do it online, because we're, all the programs are completely online. So I think it is, it's a great opportunity for your employees, and we would like to come and tell them about it.
Thank you, sir.
So you all will let us know if you all decide that we can do it?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, yeah, we don't have no problem. Contact my office, and like I said, we can have a, make some time for, get run up all the employees, and you make a presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, and you all have a great day.
Yeah, contact every commissioner, so that you can... Okay, we go to item number eight. It's a presentation by Miguel Moreno, the Drainage Project. I think we have gone through this once again, Mr. Moreno, and you got five minutes to make your presentation.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I want you some help.
Mr. Moreno, what you setting up?
Yes, sir.
Are you the one building a house in the problem area?
No, no, sir.
You're not, you're not, those three new houses, none of them, they don't belong to you?
No, sir.
But you did sell that property, right?
No, sir.
But it was your family.
Well, as the department, you didn't tell me it was yours?
No, it's not.
And the department was very wrong issuing permits. We got so many people flooding, and then we add into the problem? Incredible. But I see, you know what I'm talking about.
They're still building on the...
Three, three dwellings, three houses, right down the problem area. They don't have an entrance on Rajito Road.
Do you know those people, Mr. Moreno?
I do know.
Have you talked to them about the problem?
They're aware of the problem.
And even though, they got permits from the, from the...
Where we sold those to us in the county, we are contributing to the problem, because the problem, you don't have an entrance, there's a flooding area, and yet we're contributing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the judge on the permits that we're issuing. We should cease issuing permits on that area. And now, it doesn't belong to, because it belongs to Commissioner Peña, but I'm a county commissioner. Yeah, we have to be hearing this, and the problem continues, because we're issuing permits in areas that shouldn't be permitted, until we find a solution, or we get the solution completed.
Commissioner, are those houses already up on...
Ya tienen techo, ya tienen todo, almost completed.
Well, we don't have to give them a service, a light and water.
They already have it.
Pero tienen...
They already have it.
(Indistinct conversation).
We issued the permit. We should make the planning department come here, so we can approve the permits. If they can't control it, there is the planning department. Not the permits, we approve the plaids, and subdivision plaids, but not the permits. We should bring them to approve the permits, so we can stop issuing permits in these areas, and so we can stop pickets from selling in these areas. Tres casas by the vector. No tienen entrada, period. Rajito Road.
Only when it rains.
No, no tiene entrada, period. Es un arroyo que hice.
We also welcome your presentation from the Commission's Court, and I'll address some of those issues right after we've finished this.
Lo que hemos estado viviendo en estos últimos días es de que la ciudad de Roma no está preparada para este tipo de lluvias. Puede ser una lluvia normal de entre una y dos pulgadas, y la ciudad de Roma lo estamos viendo que no está preparada. ¿Qué pasaría si llega un huracán? Al cualquier agua que pueda venir nos puede afectar, al no poder salir a nuestros trabajos, al no poder salir con los niños a la escuela, y prácticamente, si es de noche, no estamos durmiendo, estamos con la preocupación, estamos con la incertidumbre de qué va a pasar.
Cuatro pulgadas de agua y afuera de mi casa eran más de dos pies. Entonces, con cuatro pulgadas de agua y afuera de mi casa más de dos pies, imagínate un huracán. ¿Qué va a pasar? Mi esposo tuvo que hablarle a los bomberos para que lo sacaran a él, para él poder traer un mueble, para yo poder salir de mi casa, para poder yo ir a trabajar, porque si no, no podemos salir por varios días.
Unfortunately, we've experienced this long enough to where I, we can pick up on a pattern and say, okay, it's raining this much up there, well, we're gonna flood in the next three to four hours. We expect it, and that's very unfortunate, that we've been flooding so long that we can actually, you know, make a prediction of how bad we're gonna flood this time. It's gonna be devastating. There's gonna be mass devastation, in case we ever do get hit by any type of, you know, tropical storm or anything. I've seen the devastation firsthand. I know what it is to have to get, help people get out their, all their old furniture and stuff like that. I know of a, of a family that's been flooded four times inside their house, significant amount of water inside their house over the last couple of months here. It's been four times since June. It's unacceptable. We, as a society, as a community in this area, our community leaders, we cannot accept this to continue.
Son nuestros líderes que demuestren lo que ellos son para nosotros, por eso votamos, por eso los escogemos, y que demuestren que quieren hacer algo por la ciudad, que están ahí por nosotros, que se preocupen por la gente, que se preocupen por los vecinos, y que nos ayuden a confiar en ellos, porque ahorita, con lo que está pasando, yo no puedo confiar en mis líderes.
We're asking for transparency from our leaders in these events, to tell us, you know, what they've been doing and what to expect in the near future on these projects. That's the whole intent of this committee at this point in time. It is made out of the people and for the people.
Lo que necesitamos es una gran obra de drenaje. Es una gran obra que incluye a la ciudad de Roma, incluye al Presinto I y II y las ciudades cobares. Yo les pido a los políticos que se unan, se unan ellos, se unan como autoridad, porque hemos estado grandemente afectados por esta situación, que piensen en el pueblo y que se unan para ya una pronta solución del, del problema de las aguas.
Mr. Ganales, I'm gonna address you, Mr. Ganales.
Yes, sir.
Can you look into, into how can we stop the issuing of permits for light and water in these areas, and how can we stop people from selling lots in this area, until we rectify the problem?
Through the District Attorney's Office and myself, we've already started looking into that. We should have something in place, I believe, if not by the next Conventionist Court, for sure, by next month.
I've been fighting this issue, I've been fighting these issues in the 2010s, because we need to stop people from selling in these areas. And then we need to have the planning department stop issuing permits in this area.
Part of the commissioner is that there have been those provisions that have been implemented, they are in writing, that the Commission's Court has adopted. It's the effectuation, in other words, the implementation of it is what's been poured by the planning department. That's, we do need to address that, and we will be addressing it.
The permits, for the planning department to bring the permit, and we approve it like any other department.
Absolutely.
If we don't agree with them, we can shut it down.
And the Commission's Court...
Because it's not fair for him to come and show videos, and then we continue issuing permits where he could, they're selling.
Correct.
It bothers me, it's frustrating. He's creating a problem more than what it is. That's it, I don't have anything to say.
Initially, Commissioner, when we had the Commission's Court, if you remember, it was once a month, and that was one of the reasons why they gave them some autonomy, but now you all are meeting four times a month, and absolutely, I think that should be...
And you know, not only there's subdivisions, any subdivision that's affected with this problem.
Absolutely. Commissioner, we did some investigating when we spoke, it's about over two weeks ago, when, and you remember that we had a meeting with yourself and Commissioner Peña, to try to figure out exactly what was going on. Since then, we have been, well, I've been able to determine that, as far as the Drainage District is concerned, I think I had some questions as to whether or not it was confirmed. TCQ has indicated and has confirmed that there was a confirmation election, so there's no longer a question as to whether the Drainage District exists. I think a pledge will need to be proposed, it needs to be adopted as far as the Drainage District is concerned. The other thing that we've learned is that, or that I've learned, is that Starr County has, has had an effect since around 1970 floodplain regulations, which have been periodically updated since about 1987, I think they were updated again, the most of them was in 2010. So, the, the real question is, has to be, is what is in effect as far as the floodplain regulations are concerned, whether or not permits have been issued in the past, building has been allowed in floodplain areas, and what kind of floodplain, floodplain management we've had in the past and what we have currently going on. What you're addressing is really floodplain management. Whether or not it's identified by FEMA, or whether or not it's, there is a finding by the Commission's Court that there's flooding going on, you all would have the discretion to, you know, to have some modifications to floodplain management, to make sure that people are no longer, developers are no longer allowed to build freely in floodplain areas or flood-prone areas. I think that has been the problem, both, especially in Roma, because what's interesting is that Roma did not adopt floodplain regulations until 2010, and yet they seem to have problems since before 1999, but for some reason, floodplain regulations were not adopted since, until 2010, from what I can tell. And so according to TCQ, those were the most recent ones that were adopted in 2010. I don't have any copies of anything before then, but if in fact there were floodplain regulations that were adopted by Roma earlier, I don't know how, whether there were variances that were, that were given, and how developments were allowed to develop, and to make, to be made in places where we know, or people would have known, have reason to know that flood-prone. So those are, you know, right now we do have floodplain regulations that need to be...
The other thing, Mr. Ganales, those three new dwellings, those three new houses that they're building, the city of Roma was connecting the water for the three houses with a, with a three-quarter inch line, black line, not even the proper PVC line. Let's put him right in.
We'll be looking, Commissioner, certainly gonna be giving the authority back to the Commission's Court regarding permitting. It's something that we're gonna have to take the bull by the horns, we're already working on it. We recognize that there is an issue. Where it came from, we're not certain. We're looking for it, but that really doesn't matter, we're at where we're at, and we're certainly gonna be addressing the matter and getting the authority.
And I thank both of you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scolari, going back to what you said about the Drainage District. So, last time you said that we could not use the Drainage District's money, because we have not had an election.
Until, until we confirm that we have, there was a confirmation election pursuant to the statute, so we couldn't, I don't know that the county judge's office had, or anybody else, including the county clerk's office, had records of that particular confirmation election, but TCQ, which is Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, had, indicates that they have all those records, and they have sent them to us, and I forwarded them to the county attorney. So that has already been confirmed, and the Drainage District does in fact exist.
The Drainage District, we can use the money for that Drainage District.
You have to approve a pledge. You have to meet as the Drainage District...
Okay, but then, we don't have to go through elections or anything.
No, no, that apparently happened back in, whenever it was created, 2009.
Okay.
I just like to say one thing on the Grand City of Roma enforcement of floodplain administration. Since 95 or 96, the city adopted the floodplain administration ordinance, and since then have been very aggressively enforcing floodzone regulation in floodzone areas. The problem that you have in the areas that you're talking about is that FEMA does not recognize them as a floodzone area. Incredibly, the entire Arroyo Los Morenos West is not even recognizing the flood zone, start to fin it. As far as the city of Roma, you have to go get a permit from the floodplain administrator. If you, if you want a variance, you have to go to the, there's a commission that is autonomous, and that they make their decision, and nine times, or 10 times out of 10, you're not gonna get one. You're not gonna get a variance. City of Roma enforces floodplain administrations very, very strictly. These are areas that have just been annexed by the city. But, but I'll tell you again, FEMA maps do not recognize this area as a flood zone for the existence, literally, the existence of the entire Arroyo Los Morenos West. And that's the problem that you have. And that's the problem that you have. The FEMA maps were updated in 2010, that is correct, but even then, your floodplain management administrator or coordinator for every county by law is supposed to have, or by your ordinance supposed to have, it's not gonna be the same as back then.
Mayor, we're gonna continue this, we're gonna continue this all day. We do not need an engineer and we do not need FEMA to tell us that we flood. We don't need them, we common sense has to prevail.
I agree, but if he's not, if not recognized as a floodzone A, there's no way you can stop them from building.
There has to be some loophole that we can stop them. There has to be, there has to be. If not, we'll, we'll build one or we'll make one.
Okay.
No, you can't.
That's it. Mr. Escobar.
All right. Well, good morning. I'm not here to point fingers at some of the commissioners are doing, obviously, about this and that. This problem is an ongoing situation, and you know, it's appalling to me, some of these statements made up here at the Commission's Court today, of how, you know, instead of trying to find a solution, we're pointing and trying to stop a project because you're mad about the fact that we're pointing out some of the, you know, deficiencies that this county has. So we're gonna go with this. I do wanna thank you all. Progress has been made, commissioners, more progress has been made in the last two weeks or three weeks than in the last two years on this project. I really wanna thank each of you all who has taken the time to actually clean out the part of the canal, you know, you know, cleared out the board door, anything to do with, with the project. The county attorney for stepping up and trying to, you know, get these properties condemned in a proper manner and in a timely manner. One thing we would like, you know, is a joint resolution being passed by, by the Commission's Court, saying that you are working on ending the flooding, and a joint resolution between the city of Roma and Escobar, this is a multi-jurisdiction project. There's, you know, we have the city of Roma that has great interest, you know, their city is getting affected, we have the county getting affected, and this has been going on for a long time. As part of this, you know, our commissioner has promised that, you know, that the problem will be fixed, especially in that affected street, which Mr. Commissioner, you know, Alvaro's pointed out. He's the one that lowered it, that subdivision would not flood any, would not flood before, now it does, but it's time to, to look for the solution and, and not be pointing fingers and, and get upset about the fact that it's being brought to light. Actually now, we'd like the Commission's Court again, again to propose a joint resolution between the cities of Roma and Escobar. I don't know how you all are open to that idea, but it just, we would like something, you know, formalized to say, hey, we're working on resolving the flooding. I understand this is gonna take some time. I'm not here, you know, to ask for overnight, we're gonna get this fixed, but we are, you know, asking for that to happen. Having a resolution in place is another step in the right direction. I understand that obstacles will, will be coming. We plan working closer with county cities and other elected officials to secure funding in the, you know, legislative session in, in the state and through some other, you know, means that we, we're looking into. We're just really asking, you know, for your all's support, and like I said, this, this bashing or blaming here and there, it, it needs to cease amongst us. There's political differences amongst every commissioner or different parties here, but the, the suffering of the people, the flooding is, is not a political issue, it shouldn't be.
And I don't need a political issue, I need for the permits to stop.
And that's correct, sir, and you should have taken that action a long time ago, if you really wanted that, okay? With all due respect. So I'm, I'm up here speaking, you have, you've been in office for a while, you've known about the problem, so if you really wanted that action, I think we would have done something about it, okay? Without due respect, sir. That's all I have for you all. I'm here with you all, I don't wanna be against anybody, and this back and forth, commissioners, needs to stop, we need to work together, Precinto 1 and 2 and the counties, for the solution, sir. Not the, the pointing fingers, let's get the solution going, okay? I'll have one more speaker if I may, and that's, that's it. Nothing, nothing too crazy. Mr. Santos? I appreciate y'all's time.
I don't think, I don't think, no, let me tell you, Mr. Moreno.
Yes, sir.
These resolutions, I don't think it'll help any, because you can make a resolution and they don't comply, it doesn't mean nothing. The commissioner has, as I understand, has met with the, with GLO, they already worked out an agreement, the project is on, on the way, all you have to be patient, make sure that it'll take time, but they're working on it. Resolutions are gonna get you nowhere, because if you make a resolution and the other one backs up, it ain't gonna work. Paper doesn't, doesn't work, you know? We need action out there by the commissioners that are doing the project, that's what we need.
Let me address that if I can, real quick, Mr. Santos. It's, it's, it's a piece of paper, but it is a commitment that you're making and it's more likely to happen if you put it on paper. And instead of, you know, back and forth, I don't understand, we're fighting, we're not trying to get to a resolution, it's a piece of paper that the court can be, as a, as a formality to the public and to everybody reassuring, hey, we're working on this. You're seeing it verbally now, but we, we've talked about this for years, you know? This is not, the, the first time that we talked about this. This is an ongoing issue. So I, I, again, I'm appalled as to why you refuse the court as a formality to just pass this, you know, get a joint resolution to end the flooding.
Mr. Moreno, we already have, we already have a grant that's working on this.
Correct.
And is that not in and of itself a resolution? Is that not in and of itself an indication that they're trying to? So, so what, so what would, what else is needed? I mean, how many more videos do we need to point out to the Commission's Court what they already know? I mean, on the one hand, you say, we want you to work together, we don't wanna point fingers, but that precisely is what you're doing. It appears that's precisely what you're doing, and that's what I'm saying is, this is a deliberative body that acts on facts. If you wanna present facts, that's fine, present them, but this video is showing us nothing more than what's already been shown. And, and, and the fact that we already have a grant that the county has been trying to work on to be able to condemn these, these properties, to be able to expand the Arroyo is already indicating to you, to you and to the public that they're trying to move on this. So I don't know why we need more resolutions when we already have grants that are already working on this. And so the, the question for you is, how many more videos do we need to point out what is already known to Commissioner Alvaro, to Commissioner Peña, to Commissioner Gámez, to all the commissioners and the county judge? That's fine, I don't have a problem. None of us do, but present us facts that will be able to get us forward. They're already working on the solution at this point.
And it took some of these videos, and it took this pressure to get where we're at. Without it, and if it ceases, we might just fall behind. This happened in 2008, without due respect, Mr. Moreno, I don't know if you're aware of this, we got, we got some progress, but we stopped, everybody forgot, and we're still here, ten years later.
With all due respect, Mr. Moreno, I, I, I take issue with that, it has not been forgotten, it has not stopped. If you look at Project GLO, it's continually moved forward. Granted, it is not fast enough to get the results that you expect, and you just stated up there that we need to move forward and we need to move on, and that's the thing that we're, that's going on. Part of the problem with joint resolutions is that we're already under a grant. If we do a joint resolution to try to get some objective, you have a danger of having that grant pulled, and that's completely counterproductive, and that's not what we want. So I appreciate your, your effort.
Mr. Gómez, and we talked, he doesn't know, but we talked to Roma, we talked to Escobar, Commissioner Peña and myself talked. It's not that we were acting alone.
I think one of the things is that there's a, there's a great disconnect in the lack of education from our constituency. Commission's Court is held twice a month, and nothing has been done differently in the last month than what has been done the last twelve years. If people show up to the Commission's Court, they'll see their, their elected body acting, and that's, it's just, there is a lack of transparency. Everything that you all have requested is just a matter of asking, and this court doesn't hide that. And that's what, you know, I think that there's just a lack of education, there's a little bit of a lack of, of interest until it, until it hits home. Así que me puede a mí, and then I'm interested. And we're moving forward, sir, with all due respect, we are moving forward, and these gentlemen are doing what they can. What you've seen in two weeks has been happening over the last two years. Frank.
No, no, but, yeah, we need to move on. Thank you, Mr. Moreno, and like I said, like I said, you know, the, the progress is, is going on, you know, and it's, and the construction, they've been, like you said, they've been cleaning, GLO has given them the okay, they're still working on the project, and, and the commissioners, I'm talking, understand me, the commissioners are taking action, like you said, hopefully you need to just be patient and, and try to work with them and, you know, and, and get the, the ball going.
And that's what we're doing here today.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, but this resolution and all kind of stuff, it's just, and pointing fingers that the, the city is doing this, the city is doing, the project, the project is on the, is rolling, so that's what, that's your main concern.
Well, our main concern is us working together, sir, and again, it is what it is, it needs to be made a priority, it hasn't been done in the past, and that's what we're all asking.
But right now it's working, they're working on it.
Correct, sir.
So that's it, they can't do more than what.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Take it forward. For your time.
I just wanted to tell you that there are three resolutions by the county already unfiled, that they were presented by the city of Roma through the planning department, and the, the mini interceptor or the mini channel is one thing, but there are three resolutions. If those resolutions are given to the federal and state program office so that they can implement it and do the enforcement or management of those resolutions, that's all you need. The resolutions are already unfiled, in the county.
Yeah, but that, I'm feeling it.
But your federal and state program needs to be directed to take action on those resolutions. That's all you need, for them to take action.
I do recommend, Judge Protem, that the drainage district does have a meeting, and, because I think it's appropriate for the drainage district to begin to make a presentation. I believe that the engineers also have a presentation to make regarding the project that Mr. Peña has right now to redirecting the, the natural water flow or the floodplain to its pre-existing conditions. Mr. Peña has talked about that, but it is appropriate for the drainage district, and I think there should be a meeting that should be called so that the engineer can talk about what has happened as far as Arroyo de los Morenos East, which apparently the water, the floodplain has been redirected for many years, and it now needs to be, what Mr. Peña is working on is to redirect the floodplain to its correct channel as, as shown by FEMA, and the engineer will need to show what Mr. Peña is doing as part of the drainage district presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We go back to the regular agenda, item number four, approval of claim, Mr. Carter.
Yes, Judge Protem, the claims have all been reviewed, and I need to point out, one in particular, page five, there's a, there's a travel and seminar, for, 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 and we recommend that that focus on being, all the others have been reviewed in order. Page five, the second one from the bottom.
Mr. Carter, as, as we approve these claims, that means this, this check will be printed out?
Yes.
If we approve these claims, that means this check will be printed out?
Yes.
For the rolling bridge? The reason I'm asking because Dogma machinery has the backhoe for Precinto 1 on hold because they haven't received a check. But I see him, I see it here.
If you'll see down at the bottom of the page, it says, subject to.
Okay.
So we are monitoring that very closely, and we do not like to give a cell check.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We'll have a motion to approve the claim for the exception of JP number four.
Yes. Take it.
If we move our commissioner's side, telling from the commissioner, Commissioner Peña, any discussion? Without all those in favor, signify by saying aye, and all opposed, same sign, motion carried. We go to reports, letter A, Starr County Gas Department.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My report is one page on your, on your package. Just to emphasize on that, on that page, we hadn't finished the drug and alcohol abuse audit while, while I was writing this, this report, so I didn't put anything further except that we were going through the audit. And now I'd like to report that the bottom line on the drug and alcohol, alcohol abuse plan for the county, or for our department, we fall under DOT. Our department is the only department in the county that falls under DOT. Our plan needs to be completely updated. We failed in many categories, we're not gonna be fined, they'll do a follow-up audit in six to eight months, but by that time they expect a new plan in place, and I thought, bottom line for me, I thought we have zero tolerance in the county and I thought that would take care of things, but apparently DOT wants us to have several components in it, including professional help or counseling for some of our employees, which we do not carry. I thank Armandina for, for helping me out a lot and answering their questions, but we're lacking on it. I will talk to Rain about what was need, what we'll be needing on that plan, but we've got to come up with something better. It's, we, we fell kinda short because it's a thirteen-year-old plan, and it had never been audited, so we had never been told that we were out of compliance with it. It's really not something that, that we can, or we can be responsible for, except that now they're enforcing things that they want us to do. It's gonna cost money, bottom line. The other, part of the report is, is not in your package, but I left you a page there. It looks like this. It's, it's your volume loss sheet, and the reason I hadn't included in there is because I was afraid of, I was right on what was happening. We hadn't been able to do leak patrol the entire month of September, and with the rains, we can't do leak patrol if it's wet. With the rains coming one after another one, I knew that the earth was moving, and with our lines being as old as they are, they're starting to move, and we're having a, a big volume loss right now. We're starting with a bigger, we're already on it, we started with the bigger leaks on Friday, and we're gonna continue down the line from big to small, to see how much we can capture and, and default on this for the next, next, next several months, but we will be having a loss for, I'm assuming October, November.
On, on the western part, you were on the way to Suntex, right?
Yes.
Suntex. If you need to provide services there, I can help you out with the backhoe or whatever, whatever you need to expand the services, either to Suntex or Midway. We need to get more customers in.
If, yes, if, if we can get people interested in, in, in trying to connect, Suntex Road is, Suntex and Los Garzas are the easiest ones to, to do. And by the way, that is part of the, the project that is, that has poly in it. We don't have PVC, so that's even easier, it's, it's better for us to, to, if we're gonna expand, to do it that way.
What do we need, to send out a survey to see who needs to be connected?
Yes.
Who wants to be connected?
What, what we need is, if it's cost effective for us.
Can you send somebody, I'll put some people on?
Yeah.
Suntex and Midway, Bodo?
Yes, sir.
See, let's see, if people are interested, I can help you with the gas folks.
That, that will be a real easy connection for us. Commissioner, Garza asked for Las Lomas last, last meeting, and Las Lomas is a high volume. I know because I, I travel that colonia almost every day, and every, every other home has a little tanquecito of propane, so I know they cook with, with, with gas. The, the problem with the Lomas and Commissioner Garza complained or mentioned it, is that the rock is hard there. The, it's not an easy lay.
It's gonna be easy to crash there.
It's, it takes, it takes a big effort. Back then, when I started, ten years ago, I had prematurely, or in advance, I had estimated we needed a good half a million infrastructure in there, just for Las Lomas alone. I suggested, ten years ago, I suggested a hundred thousand dollars from every budget of you all's would take care of the problem, but you all didn't want to.
But you need to, when you do a survey, you don't just do a survey, you need a commitment in writing that they will connect, because everybody can tell you, it'll be fine, and when you get done, say, well, we changed our mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
You can't go out there and make a commitment.
If you're gonna, yes, if you're gonna do it, you need some, some commitment. It's like what Commissioner Alvaro is saying.
This area is Midway and Suntex.
Yeah.
Las Lomas is por la piedra.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Transport station, Federbe, Escobar, please.
Morning, Commissioner. I wanted to inform you, last meeting I, I had told you about, we're going to the cog to try and get a grant for a new tire cutter, especially for the semi-truck tire, and we were awarded that grant. Now we're only waiting on TCQ approval, and, and they will, we'll be able to purchase that machine. It's roughly around thirty-seven thousand dollars worth.
How much?
Thirty-seven thousand.
That's what it actually costs?
Yes, sir. While delivering everything.
That's for the big tires?
That's gonna be for semi-truck tires. And we were getting together, I mean, together and myself, so we can come up with a, a price of what we were gonna collect for those type of tires, because, I mean, it's gonna take more work, a little bit of more work for the guys to, to maneuver those tires and storage and all that while we're cutting them, but we don't have a set fixed right for that type of tires yet.
How, how many tires can you do per hour, truck tires? Are you gonna, are you gonna cut them or are you gonna just pull the wires out?
This machine, particular machine, will take the tight ones off, one will take the tight ones off, we can cut the tire into four pieces. So the whole procedure for one tire will probably take around three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes?
Yes, sir. Because you gotta take it to one machine to take the tight ones off, then take it to the other machine and get it cut.
So this machine will do both things in one?
No, not this particular machine, they do have the combo thing where they set it up in a trailer where you can have both machines, but it's basically what we have. We'll still be able to do it ourselves, but that's what it would take on a, per tire, of not more than five minutes.
I know the grants that they have through the cog are kinda small, but have you ever thought about, I understand a, a shredding machine for tires costs about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
We had, I mean, I think the best thing that we could do for the county would be to have a shredder. A shredder that would shred the, take the metal out and shred it and you could sell the metal in one part and sell the shredded material. And eventually it would pay itself down the line. But yes, the monies are, these machines are very costly. I mean, but that would be probably the best thing to do.
How much do you, how?
I think with one, around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy for a shredder, but to take the metal out, it would be another machine. It would be a couple of machines that you would need for that.
So you cannot shred it with the metal in it?
You can't, but they, I mean, the ones that would use would use the rubber only, so the metal they would reject, they wouldn't buy it for you. So you need to take the metal out and then.
How about on a radius tire that has metal around it too?
I mean, there'll be tires that you can do it and there'll be tires that won't be.
Well, you cannot, you can't solve the problem anyway.
Yeah, you still have.
Because if you can't do some, you can't do the other one, but you still got the same problem.
Yes, sir. You're correct.
You want to tell the greater from precinct one, that was in that area that they fixed the road?
Yes, sir. I wanted to thank you. I mean, they were doing that when I was driving out here.
We have a lot of problems in there.
I want to thank you for having the.
So the public can know, we have a lot of problems in there anyway. You know that.
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of problems with the rain.
And I've been seeing you and your personnel down there fixing it and working on it and I appreciate it because, I mean, that road going into the transfer station gets pretty bad when it rains. I mean, we have holes up there, probably two feet deep or more. So thank you very much, Commissioner Alvarez, for that. Other than that, I mean, everything is normal operation. Any more questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Letter C, next collector.
Good morning.
This is my last report for the fiscal year 2017-2018. The total, your packet, my report is in your package. The total county what collections for September of 2018 were two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. In September 2017, there were four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. There was a total collection of one-thousand-five-hundred less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected two-million-two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand more than last year. Since 2017, taxes became delinquent in July the first. Total year-to-date current collections for the four Stark County entities remain thirteen million-four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. This year, the tax office has collected one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand more than last year by the end of June. Our total delinquent collections for September 2018 just for Stark County were one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, five-hundred dollars. Total delinquent collections for 2017 were one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, five-hundred dollars. There was a total collection, delinquent collections for three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred more than last year. And that's my report. I'll be preparing a recap for, of collections for the entities of 2017 tax year on the next Commissioner's court. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Letter D, Mr. Alvarez. Tony Kirk.
Commissioner's judge, my report is in the package.
Any questions? Letter E, Sheriff's Department.
Morning, commissioners. That's a report for the year for 2017-2018 is total revenues for the month of, projected revenues for the month of September 2018 are two-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars came from Hidal County with the new contract. Total amount of inmates on October the third, federal inmates were one-hundred-and-twenty-nine and total county, which also combines the Hidal County inmates, is one-hundred-and-eleven. As of this morning, we were at a hundred-and-thirty-eight marshals from the federal inmates and Hidal, we bumped it up to twenty-eight as well. Total increases revenues from last year were one-million-two, one-million-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars for a total revenues of two-million-eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars for 2017-18.
This was to the end of this fiscal year, right?
Correct.
Two-million-eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine, that's what enters this year?
That is correct. Very good, sir. Thank you, sir.
I mean, Chief, I know you don't hear very much, but the Sheriff's Department and the jail, you are doing a good job.
Very good.
And I know you don't hear it much, but we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Letter F, Stark County Bridge.
This is the report for September 2018. The total revenue from traffic, it's two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-thirty-two dollars and we show a decrease of twelve-thousand-five-hundred-and-four for the month of September 2018 compared to the month of September 2017. And we show an increase of five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-three with fifty cents on collections for the, I'm sorry, for the month of September 2018 compared to the month of August 2018. We have other collections of six-hundred-and-eighty with ninety-five cents and the grand total collections for September 2018, it's two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars with ninety-five cents. And I have on your second page on the report for the year of 2017-2018 for the fiscal years, two-million-five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand with a hundred-and-fifty dollars. And we have another total inflow of eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and five cents. And the grand total for the year of 2017-2018, it's two-million-six-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight with five cents.
Do you know what was the budgeted amount for the year?
For the month?
What was the expected collection?
For what? For?
For this year.
For this year, more or less the same amount, like two-million and a half. So it was a little bit over.
You exceeded over the amount?
Yes, yes. Like by a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Letter G, Mr. Peña.
I'm looking at the Fima map today.
Looking at the map?
In Fima map.
Ah, okay.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to present the report for the month of August 2018. The general fund had eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars and that is five-hundred-thousand more than the same time last year. The road and bridge fund had a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars, being a hundred-and-six-thousand more than the same time last year. The total cash amount of cash in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of August 2018 covered by this report is eleven-point-seven million dollars. This overall amount is two-point-zero million more than the same time last year. We continue to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety and combine the county's city of Roma counties currently past due by over one million dollar combined. Deprist Stark County was four-point-one million, being three-hundred-thousand dollars less than the same time last year. The county's amounts in deposits were all collateralized at a hundred-and-forty-eight percent. This pledge level is forty-eight percent above the LCG chapter twenty-two fifty-seven-point-zero-twenty-two requirements and forty-three percent above our contract terms with Lone Star National Bank. The 2018 budget includes the borrowing of a new one-million tax anticipation loan. The borrowing of a new one-million-dollar note is still pending state approval. It is also necessary to report that the state does not approve this new note. Then the county will have to lower the 2018 budget and additional one-million dollars. This pre-borrowing process may take forty-five to ninety days and since the county started this year with a negative fund balance in its operating fund, the city of Roma's one-million-dollar past due payment and most vendors are on payment hold. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, ma'am.
Letter A, Mr. Carter.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, I have kind of a long report this morning. We'll start with the usual cash reconciliation status. As of September 30th, the general fund cash available was three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars and thirteen cents. The road and bridge fund is, or was overcommitted in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents and I'll provide more details on that situation later in my report. The payroll clearing fund has had a cash balance of six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven The year-to-date expenditure report, Roman numeral two on the first page, as of nine-thirty, the general fund as a whole had available three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars and it's ninety-eight percent expended. Within that general fund are the following departments. The county judge department is ninety-five-point-oh-three percent expended for the year. The county clerk is over-expended by four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, a hundred-and-two-point-four percent. The human resources department was ninety-seven-point-nine-one percent expended. The planning department was ninety-six-point-oh-seven percent expended. Federal and state programs was ninety-nine-point-two-six percent expended. The countywide general fund was ninety-seven-point-six-nine percent expended. The contract for nine-one-one services was eighty-eight-point-three-five percent expended. The county court at law was ninety-five-point-five percent expended. The district court, the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth district court was ninety-three-point-five percent expended. The three-hundred-and-eighty-first district court was ninety-point-three-three percent expended. The district clerk's department was ninety-five-point-eight-nine percent expended. The county attorney was overspent by thirty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-one dollars, a hundred-and-twelve-point-seven-five percent expended. The district attorney was ninety-point-seven-two percent expended. The county auditor was ninety-three-point-eight-five percent expended. The county treasurer was ninety-nine-point-six-one percent expended. The tax assessor collector was eighty-seven-point-three-two percent expended. The building maintenance department was eighty-eight-point-two-five percent expended. The detention center was over-budget by seventy-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and that was a hundred-and-two-point-six percent expended. The juvenile detention center was ninety-five-point-three-eight percent expended. The sheriff's department was ninety-seven-point-eight percent expended. The agricultural extension service was ninety-six-point-seven percent expended. The nutrition program of all four precincts combined was ninety-eight-point-seven-five percent expended. And the elections administrator was overspent by eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, one-hundred-and-three-point-two-one percent expended. The road and bridge fund as a whole was ninety-seven-point-eight-six percent expended. And within that total are the following, following all the precincts. Precinct number one was ninety-eight-point-two-two percent expended. Precinct number two was ninety-nine-point-six-nine percent expended. Precinct number three was ninety-nine-point-nine-eight percent expended. Precinct number four was ninety-five-point-one-four percent expended. And the countywide road and bridge fund was ninety-six-point-five percent expended. Now is a good time for me to go ahead and ask you to review this, the additional claims list that's attached to my, attached to my report because this list is a list of the purchase orders that are not, are being held because there's not enough cash to pay them. This list represents the negative one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars that's shown on the cash reconciliation. So, so even though the expenditure reports that I've just, I've just given you do not include these. So if I included these, it would be, it would be overcommitted by a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. But I wanted to provide the commissioners with the detailed list of the purchase orders that are, that are being held.
Can you and the judge get together, Mr. Carter, to see how we're going to rectify this problem?
Yeah, we need, we need to, we need to address the road and bridge fund and the, and the general fund separately. Year eight, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen is not, the books are not closed yet. We're still receiving purchase orders dated in the prior year for which there is or will be revenue coming in later to pay those. The generally accepted accounting principle is that the expenditure should be matched to the period in which the revenue was earned to pay it. So we have things like grants and fees of office that come in after the fact, come in after October 1st. So any, any purchase order that was dated before October 1st that has revenue matched to that period, to that date, will be paid on the, on the year eight budget. Anything, anything that comes in, any purchase orders dated October 1st, of course, or later will be, will be on the New Year's budget. The road and bridge fund is different. The road and bridge fund's sole source of revenue is taxes. So tax, the tax year ended September 30th. So there's no more, there's no more year eight revenue coming in for the road and bridge fund. Therefore, what's going to happen is that this, these purchase orders that are being held will be paid, but they're going to be charged to the New Year's budget. Because there's no revenue, there's no other revenue, there's no revenue from year eight to match them.
I thought the judge had said, Mr. Carter, that we could borrow from the general fund to the road and bridge.
That's correct, Mr. Carter. That's correct because we don't have enough taxes, they're prorated the taxes to have all the amount to be paid of that. That's why we're going to borrow, get money from the general fund because the tax, the tax amounts were not correct until this coming year. So I mean, we cannot charge, you know, because of that, we got money in the general fund that we can transfer because the money that were allocated to road and bridge are not enough to pay what we have budgeted. So that's why we, but this year, apparently, according to the judge, we have already eliminated that problem. We will have money of tax going enough to pay that, that budgeted year.
Yeah, well, that transfer.
Yeah, that's what.
Maybe it could have been done, but it did not happen before September 30th. So there's no money. So I, you know, that, that part of the budget is, is closed for the year.
Well, like I said, we need to get with the judge because, you know, I mean, there's monies in the road and bridge that can be transferred to pay this, this field that you're held in back because there's, it was budgeted there. We need to transfer money from the general fund to the, to the road and bridge. Now the judge has moved the numbers of the tax revenues to make sure that we have money, tax money to cover the budget that he, that he submitted for the 2018-19.
Rena, you hear this problem? Can you tell the judge you may have a special meeting to address this problem?
Mr. Carter, worst-case scenario is you're saying that for auditing purposes, the fiscal year is closed. Is that what you're saying? In other words, there is? In other words, there's, there's no borrowing back and forth between general fund and road and bridge? For auditing purposes, let's say, what is it, or what is it that you're trying to?
Well, pretty much, yes.
So, worst-case scenario, you're stealing these monies from fiscal year 19?
Right.
Which means that they need to understand that there's going to be that much less money available for fiscal year 19.
In the coming years, in the coming years' budget.
But that's, that's, usually, we can borrow money from the general, not borrow, but take money from the general fund to pay those. That's just the way it is.
It's already, it's already after the fact.
We're starting, Mr. Carter, we're starting the year in essentially in a deficit. Like, there's already going to be debits on the budget this coming year.
Exactly, yes. You're starting, you're starting with a $157,000 deficit already.
But the general fund has more than enough to cover all these, don't it?
What the.
After the facts.
After the fact.
But that's, that's, that's not relevant. That, that can't happen because the year's already closed. If, if, if the commissioners' court wanted that to happen, they should have made the transfer before September 30th.
I know we, I know we have been talking about it for about two months.
I've been giving.
Yeah, I know you've been mentioning it for a while.
Well, yes, I have, I've been, I've been warning, I've been giving.
But, Mr. Carter, can the new budget be amended?
I'm not correct, Mr. Carter, what I'm understanding is that we're starting on a deficit on some of, on the road bridge.
Right.
Because at the end of the year, we had a surplus on the general. So, we should start off this, the year of the generals surplus, but it's not budgeted on there. Because they're saying that there's money in there. So it's kind of sort of like.
I think if you read the fine print in the budget, I think you'll see that, that the budget, the budget for this year that was presented includes, it does include.
That's surplus.
The surplus.
So it's kind of sort of moving of papers.
Right, that's right, yeah, I mean.
You're probably going to take from the general to cover that before the end of the year. And I think maybe through a budget amendment through the year, there's new revenues.
As long as we're, we're under the law, or we follow in the law, Mr. Carter, help us. Is there money over there to cover this?
This is not uncommon, this is not the first time that POs are held off and paid in the next fiscal year. I mean, this is something that's sort of standard practice even at the state level. It's going to happen from time to time.
I think all of us have a, well, three of us have a problem with a new backhoe sitting on the, on the ground with the dealership. And then we need the backhoes to work.
Yeah, I know. Hey, that's why you need to manage your.
Anyway, we'll figure it out, Mr. Carter.
All right. Now, let me find my place. On Roman numeral four, we're, we're at Roman numeral four on page five.
Page five.
Of my report, which is the revenue report for the general fund and the road and bridge fund as of September 30th. Letter A, the general fund, current taxes received were 99.51% of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes were 102%, 102.36% of the budgeted amount. Federal payment in lieu of taxes was the exact amount. The nutrition program grant received 105.5% of the budgeted amount. The indigent defense grant only received 69.27%. The 911 services grant received 68.89%. Fees of office received were 84.5% of the budgeted amount. The detention center received 113.96% of the budgeted amount. They collected, over the budgeted amount, they collected $282,223. The state salary supplements received 110.44% of the budgeted amount. The Department of Family and Protective Services only received 42.26% of that grant. The international bridge transfers received 100% of that budgeted amount. The gas system transfers were 50% of the budgeted amount. At the top of page six, the transfer station transfers were zero. The note payable was of the budget, that was budgeted, was not, was not done, so that amount is zero. The Los Olmos watershed was, we were, the, but the general fund received $187,000 from the Los Olmos watershed, which was 100% of the budgeted amount. The building permits received 291.56% of the budgeted amount. They went over the budget by $95,782. The election expense reimbursements were 100% of the budgeted amount. The settlement agreement was 105.05% of the budgeted amount. The Real Bravo wind power pilot program was 100% of the budgeted amount. And the total general fund was, received 94.77% of the budgeted amount. In the road and bridge fund, the current taxes received 101.79% of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes received were 118.47% of the budgeted amount. Motor vehicle licenses received were 106.22%. Fines and forfeitures were only 67.66%. Vehicle weight fees were 52%. The Real Bravo wind power pilot program was 100%. The auction proceeds were 100% of the budgeted amount. The total road and bridge fund received 102.12% of the budgeted amount in revenue for the year. At the top of page seven is a summary of the international bridge operations for the year. The, the revenue from bridge tolls was $2,389,118, which is 95.56% of the budgeted amount. The rent from Ueta was 91.67%. Rent from the Los Olmos, rent from the port facility was 97.2%. The total, the total international bridge revenues received for the year was 95.5% of the budgeted amount. And then the expenditures were a total of $2,653,827, which is 86.31% of the budgeted amount. The gas operating system, the revenue was $1,033,771, which was 103.38% of the budgeted amount. And the expenditures were $833,987, 83.42% of the budgeted amount. The solid waste transfer station revenue was, the tipping fees revenue was 97.28% of the budgeted amount. And the NAD Bank, NAD Bank grant was $120,000, 100% of the budgeted amount. And then the expenditures were $1,302,58, which is 96.05% of the budgeted amount. At the top of page eight is a summary of the debt owed by Starr County as of September 30th. The tax note series 2014A has a current balance of $236,142. The certificate of obligation 2004 has a current balance of $546,656. And if you'll recall, there was a, there was a motion passed by commissioners' court at the last meeting to pay that in full. The judge and I are working on the mechanics of getting that done. There's a legal requirement for 30 days' notice to the, to the bondholder before we're allowed to actually do that. So we're, um, I'm actually, I'm actually requesting legal advice on how to compose that notice. There's very specific legal requirements for the wording of that notice and I don't, I have not been able to finalize that, that document yet. There's an equipment loan with a current balance of $797,595. And then there's another, there's an equipment loan owed to Revenue Markets by the International Bridge and that has a balance of $51,627. There's an equipment loan for precinct four that has a balance of $44,253. And another equipment loan for precinct four that has a balance of $43,193. And then our participation with the city of Roma for the international bridge operations still has a balance of $1,266,680. Below that is a summary of the interest in sinking fund that we have available to pay the certificate of obligations, certificate of obligation series 2004. It has a balance of $974,558 as of 9:30. Pardon the, pardon the typographical error there, that should be 9:30. So there's a surplus of $427,902. And that's another matter that I'm consulting with legal and accounting advice on because that surplus by law has to be returned to the taxpayers. And we're trying to figure out the most correct way to do that. At the top of page nine, invoices being held unpaid by the auditor's office. There are none except for the ones for the road and bridge department that I've already discussed. Roman numeral nine is the purchase orders for the road and bridge fund that I've already discussed. And Roman numeral 10 is a summary of the additional revenue that was certified by the auditor for, during the year. There's been no additions to that in the final month of the year. At the bottom of page 10, Roman numeral 11 is a summary of the budget expenditure line items that ended the year in the overspent condition as of September 30th in whole dollars. You'll see the, the detailed distribution number line items there with the, with the amount. And that continues on page 11. I don't feel the need to read each one, each line item individually. I'd be glad to provide that list to anyone that requested. Again, those, those line items, those, the expenditures have already been posted to that, to those accounts. So, the invoices are paid, but it resulted in over-budget condition.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Can we go back to page six of 11? On the road and bridge, apparently we hit $115,000 more money, $115,596 more than what actually was budgeted. Is that correct?
A hundred, yes, that's correct.
So how come we don't have enough money to, to complete the, all these POs? According to the space here, the road and bridge fund, which belongs to us here, we, we collected, we over-collected $115,596 more than what actually was budgeted.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
So then, and we don't have monies to pay the POs that are pending. I don't, I don't, I'll see how that.
Well, um.
I was killing the countywide.
The answer to that question.
The countywide road and bridge, what we spent on the countywide lights and all that. That's been my fight all the, all year, that we pay.
But we're talking about the road and bridge, what he says, that we got, we, we had budgeted these monies. I mean, budgeted $5,462,400.
Yeah, but over here.
And then we, we collected $5,778, $115,000 more. This is what we collect, what is budgeted. That's not counting the lights and all that stuff.
It's already budgeted.
But it's not matching.
It's not matching the other one. Over here says we budgeted $5,383 and here it's showing $5,462. The numbers are not matching, Mr. Carter.
So, you know, we, we got a surplus of $115,000 more than, more than what we budgeted. And still we ain't got monies to pay the bills, so.
Well.
Something is not right, in my opinion. And I'm not an accountant, but, you know.
Well, if you go back to page four and look at the revenue, I mean, look at the expenditures.
Page four?
Yes.
Those numbers don't match with that one.
Roman numeral three, Roman numeral three, letter A. The, the total expenditure for the year were $5,268,637, 97.86% of the budgeted amount. Plus, plus this $157,000 in, in, in held purchase orders. So, there's your, there's your answer.
And I understand that, you know, we budgeted $5 million and so. And we, and, and that's what we're budgeting. And we collected more than that. And still we don't have monies to pay what we had budgeted. That's, that's what I.
You spent more than you collected.
But, like, we collected more than what we budgeted. So if somebody would spend his budget, or.
Can you tell us where did we spend more than what was budgeted? Because I think, I think the full commission stayed within their budget, or less than their budget.
But we still, we even got a $115,000 surplus.
Okay. Remember that the accumulated deficit from prior years in the road and bridge fund is over a million dollars. 1.1 million.
Yes, but we have a budget to pay that.
You started the year with a deficit, a big deficit.
We started the year.
Yes.
It doesn't matter, we, we already paid the, we already paid the, what we owed at the bank. Well, 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 we'll get to it later, don't worry about it. We'll get some money somewhere to pay it.
It's numbers and accounting purposes, but the monies are.
I'll be glad to help you anytime.
Suitcase away.
Suitcase.
And the suitcase away.
No, this one is in the bank.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carter, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good report. Okay, okay, go to regular. Item number nine, discussion, take action to approve new vendors list, Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry?
The new vendors list.
The vendors list, the vendors, the new vendors have all been reviewed, documentation is all in order.
Taken here.
Remove, Commissioner signs, second, Commissioner Penya, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify with a A nine.
Aye.
Or oppose, same sign. Item number 10, discussion, take action to increase the monthly payment to the city of Roma for the Starr County participation from the operation of the international bridge from the minimum $49,364 to help every day the balance owed.
Yes, oh, Commissioner, the amount for the new year that's in the, that's in the budget for the new year is $62,500. We're increasing our payment to the city of Roma based on last year's operations from $49,365 to $62,500.
Almost $13,000.
And you need a motion for that, Mr. Carter? You need a motion for that? You need a motion for that?
Well, let me ask you something. I thought we had to go to, uh, we had to go to court, but the, the, does the, does the, does the Commissioner's Court have that authority?
We owe him the...
I know, we owe him, but he brought it up that we couldn't do it because we had to go to court. Victor, what's, what's there?
If you're increasing, if you're increasing the payment, as long as you're complying with the court, yes, you don't have to go to court if you're increasing the payment. It's only going to decrease and change by terms of the court.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
To what amount, Mr. Carter?
Sixty-two five.
Sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two five.
One hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred.
Yeah. Motion to approve, Your Honor.
So it's in the budget.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Sines, any discussion? If not all those in favor, sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discussing take action to approve the Stark County Investment Report from the fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen, Mr. Peña?
No, Mr. Peña. This is the, for the fourth quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen, ending September the thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Uh, there are currently no known areas of concern for the safety of investments held in Stark County's investment portfolio or in regard to deposits held at any particular contracted institution other than the item number five below regarding concentration risk. The investment portfolio of idle cash is two million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, ninety-nine and fifteen cents and one hundred of percent of it, of it is in certificate of deposits at Lone Star National Bank. Total interest earnings of investments for the fourth quarter was one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. As per the terms of the depository contract, the county's amounts in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with a pledge report from Lone Star National Bank. Stark County is aware of the investment concentration risk, which was reported in the annual county uh, financial audit. The county's investments are currently different maturity dates, but at one hundred percent in CDs and in only one bank. To manage this concentration risk, the investment officers monitor the performance of Lone Star National Bank and its related security pledges very closely. This quarterly investment report for the fourth quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen has been prepared in compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. Stark County is in compliance with the Texas Public Funds Investment Act. Any questions?
Motion to approve, Your Honor. Move by Commissioner Peña?
Taken.
Second by Commissioner Sines, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discussing take action to approve a refund on parcel zero, zero, nine, four, five, one, seven, business account close, Ms. Alina, for the amount of five hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. This is the second time it's brought up. Uh, I checked with, uh, the Chief Appraiser and, uh, there was a question by, I think with the District Attorney about concerns about that had to be approved by the appraisal board, but apparently that's not the case and I made that thing you squared out, that out with the Chief Appraiser.
Yes, yes, sir. We, we, we spoke about it, we discussed it and, uh, we talked to, to the District Attorney, to the County Attorney as well, to determine, you know, the process, you know, to let him know what's, uh, how, how this refund gets created. So at this time, I would like for you to, to consider, consider the refund, which is a hundred and fifty-five dollars, because this is the, the county's portion that's going to...
I show move, Your Honor.
Taken, Your Honor.
It been moved, moved. Commissioner Alves, second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion?
Commissioners, on this point, make sure that we understand that, that, uh, the appraisal district does have an obligation with the law to make sure that any corrections are reported on a quarterly basis. Those, that the law requires, anytime you make corrections, they, they have to be, uh, they have to be submitted both to the, under report, to both the ARB and of course the appraisal district. Uh, that's, that I think was what needed to happen. I think she was able to square that away as far as that reporting is done, but it has to be done. You can't just correct without reporting. Uh, it has to be disclosed and then...
So we aren't, are we in compliance?
And then I, I believe that because I think, um, Ms. Alina's indicated that she's already spoken to, uh, to Ms. Gera about that. So what the county is refunding here is the portion that was collected by the county, um, as far as that refund is concerned after the correction was done. So the other taxing entities have their portion to return back to the taxpayer. This is just what is owed by the county, but I don't know what fund this is going to be pulled from, but, uh, but this is the only, only the county's portion of the refund. There are other taxing entities that have to pitch in their, whatever they took.
We understand that, but let's go back to, you said that the, they had to be disclosed to the appraisal, to the, uh, to the appraisal district board too?
Sure, and we can, we can visit with you as far as the law, but a person, you, imagine the, the notion that, that somebody at the appraisal district can start just changing roles on the room without telling you, it doesn't hap- it can't happen that way.
No, we understand that. We don't say that they're going to change it, but according to the procedure, I know that it was not done at the appraisal board.
It just, that needs to be included in the report.
Oh, included in the report, okay. Well, that's a different story.
If it's not even quite detailed on the report, then that's given quarterly, then you can't.
And it was done based on, on your conversation with Ms. Gera, correct?
So, so we're legal on this one?
Yes, yeah, it's going to have to be done in either case. The correction has been made.
Take a bite.
We're coping. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discussing take action to adopt a county, county white burn ban for Stark County. And I know it's green right now, but you know, it doesn't hurt to re-approve, to reinstated.
How long is it going to last? How long is it going to last green?
We, we've been approving...
Well, that's what I say to you.
Yeah, no, we've been approving it because, to prevent people from burning trash in their house, not ranch lands, so let's, let's keep it going.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking, I need a motion to do that.
Second one.
It been moved by Commissioner Sines, second by Commissioner Alves, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item fourteen, discussing take action to approve a two thousand twenty redistricting services for Stark County as provided by federal mandate.
Good morning, presiding judge. Commissioners, on record, my name is Rick Alvarez, I'm with the Law Office of Ronald Rios from San Antonio. Uh, every ten years redistricting comes up. The Rios firm did the Stark County redistricting in two thousand, in two thousand and ten and would be honored to do it again this cycle. Why do we need to do redistrict? One, because it's the law, one person, one vote rule and, uh, since, the census count also determines political power and allocation of money. Uh, the last time around in twenty-ten, Texas gained four congressional districts and, uh, other states lose congressional districts, but what's important is the federal funding that, uh, we need to start working on so, uh, Stark County can get their fair share of that federal funding from the government. Um, if y'all have any questions, I can answer them. Uh, most of the information is in the packet. Mr. Rios's phone number is, is on there.
When you say redistricting services, Mr. Alvarez, we're talking about, you are going to hire people for the, the census to meet or just a redistricting?
We're just, we're just going to do the redistricting.
You don't hold the census. The census, census will...
We're going to try to help with the census. We, we, we help whoever, you know, hire for the census.
All right, okay.
Commissioner, uh, before we take any action on this item, I think we're requesting professional services on this. Uh, if you put it to, to table it, uh, and develop our argues, uh, I think that's the way we've done in the past, I think that might be...
Mr. Canales, I think the last time we had, we had this item on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, that we took action to hire Mr. Rios?
Ten years ago?
I'm pretty sure we did, so I don't know, I don't, I don't see why it was back here on the agenda, but you might want to double check. We didn't go to, like, to that procedure.
This is, this is considered, uh, a professional service?
Correct.
A, a sole service provider because there's not too many lawyers that do the redistricting, uh, that che- that work with a...
And then in that case, then we would need an affidavit and such.
Sole service.
It's all, sole service provider, actually, you need to provide an affidavit and state such and there is a quiet sole service. Uh, I'm just, if we could just table it for this meeting, maybe we'll come back in this meeting and then we'll find out if we can discuss that.
I move that we table it out.
Taken, Your Honor.
Get it back in there.
If it been moved by Commissioner Alvarez, taken by Commissioner, that this item be tabled, uh, any discussion?
Give, give, we should go ahead, see what you need.
We'll come through, uh, after this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item fifteen, discussing take action to approve a financial, financing agreement between Doggett Machinery Equipment and Stark County Precinct Two for the purchase of heavy equipment, Commissioner Peña?
Yes, Your Honor, purchasing a brand-new two thousand and eighteen backhoe, motion to approve, Your Honor.
Taken and moved.
It been moved and second, second moved by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Sines, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item sixteen, discussing take action to accept, uh, lease payment from...
Echo, oesco.
Echo, yeah.
Let's go say, in the amount of one thousand dollars for the Stark County redistricting department, Precinct Four.
Move to pass.
Second.
It been moved by Commissioner Sines, second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item seventeen, discussing, discussing take action to purchase Medina Electric building located on, at twenty-two, thirty-five FM fifty, FM seven fifty-five road, if we got a city, Commissioner Sines?
Yes, uh, Judge, moving in and contact with Medina Electric for the purchase of their, their old building. We're in there, need some more space, so I've been talking to Judge Fleda, wanted to bring it up to you and I have the contract or some of the paperwork for you to review. Uh, we're going to, that's a Lone Star letter, but I need to bring in the, I have the mitts and bounds and everything on it.
We, we table the matter for, I guess, the commissioner?
This is just permission to proceed.
Oh, okay, well, the way it's written, it's...
It's a purchase, it's a purchase.
I guess, well, you're asking, make a motion so that, to further the, the negotiations and so on.
Okay.
Can we do corrected wording?
We can make a motion to, to negotiate, to venture into negotiations.
Okay. If it been moved by Commissioner Sines?
Second, Your Honor.
Commissioner Peña, any other discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item eighteen, discussing take action on accepting, an acceptance of a FY two, two thousand and eighteen operation Stone Garden award in the amount of two million dollars for the Stark County Sheriff's Office and friendly forces. You want to make...
You're not friendly force.
Sir, Commissioner, this is the, the award, the receipt for Stone Garden, it's just the, uh, the acceptance.
Do you want a whole time round?
Yes, sir.
Take it.
It been moved by Commissioner Sines, second by Commissioner Alves, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, discussing take action on approving the zero tolerance towards domestic violence proclamation for October seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Victor Canales?
Commissioners, this is a proclamation that we ask at the court en- uh, entry each year, uh, regarding the court's attitude towards domestic violence, that it be zero tolerance. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and, uh, we'd like the court to enter into such proclamation.
I move that we approve the proclamation here.
It been moved by Commissioner Alves, second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number twenty, discussing take action to approve resolution to support and participate in the South Texas Development Council and confirm the appointment of representatives from the Stark County, from the, from the County of Stark.
Who do we have right now?
At present time, uh, Judge, uh, it's Commissioner Peña and Commissioner Sines.
Are you attending the meetings?
Yo si.
Yo no.
You know, you see. You don't want to move that we continue the appointment of Commissioner Peña, Commissioner Sines?
No.
Okay. And, and, second.
Second, Your Honor.
It been moved by Commissioner Alves, second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-one, discussing take action to approve the two-twenty-nine district attorney's pre-trial budget FY two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen and the two-two, two-twenty-nine district attorney's chapter fifty-nine budget FY two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Escobar?
Those have been submitted to the, uh, Commissioners' Court and to the, also to the Auditor's Office.
I move, may I please, what do you want?
Second, Your Honor.
It been moved by Commissioner Alves, second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-two, discussing take action to approve the opening of an, of an account for the title, chapter fifty-nine account for the County Attorney's Office. Victor Canales?
It's, uh, asking for opening of an account, Judge.
I move when we move the, when they tell you...
Again.
No, we move the...
I would ask the Commissioner for, uh, to take twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five at one time, Judge, to the same...
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. I thought you didn't handle the chapter fifty, but you...
We do not, we are going to be starting with chapter fifty-nine.
Okay.
They, they can't forfeit, they can receive forfeited funds because of the, the joint task force.
Okay.
Move to pass. Second, Your Honor. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, who moved?
I move.
Uh, Commissioner Sines, motion by Commissioner Sines, second by Commissioner Alves, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item twenty-one, discussing take action...
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
To approve a two thousand...
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
Huh? Are they twenty-three?
Six.
Six.
Number twenty-six.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
And twenty-five?
What you gonna do?
You say, you say, regal.
We're going to take them all at one time?
You're a good twenty-six. You're a good Victor. Victor requested so we could join twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, we go, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
No.
Those have already been considered.
This, you say, you say, you say.
We, we, we're on twenty-six now.
You're a good one.
When, when did you do that?
A little, he requested that twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five be together. So we went, we made the motion. Mr. Sines made the motion, Mr. Alves second, so we're okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll combine them.
You like to be here. We got a head of you. By the justice, for that, Commissioner.
You better. Item twenty-six?
Check that.
Twenty-six, after thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, twenty-six, thirty-five is a budget amendment.
Okay. Item twenty-six to thirty-five are budget amendments. Are they in order, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. They're in order, move to pass.
The budget amendments have all been reviewed and all in order.
Yeah. It been moved by, by Commissioner Sines? Sines, and second by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And it's ten minutes before twelve, and we go into executive pursuit to section five, five one zero four, seven, seven four, we go into executive session, discuss order of salary and the relinquish and abandon of personal, of highway seven fifty-five location, back to Stockyard. Okay, it's ten minutes after twelve, and we go back in open session. We go to item discussing executive session, item number thirty-six, personnel.
Order of salaries.
After order of salaries...
Taking a motion to approve order of salaries.
It been moved a second, it moved by Commissioner, second by, by Commissioner's Science, any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirty-seven, Mr. Canales, can you word that?
Just ask for approval on the abandonment of that east...
Motion to approve, Your Honor, the abandonment of that east, of eastman adjacent to Stockyard.
It been moved by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner's sign, all those in favor signify by saying aye.